I call to order the Westlake City Schools regular board meeting for Monday, March twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty five. Roll call.
Craft, here. You're not?
Here.
Panukin?
Here.
Lamb?
Here.
Lozinski?
Here.
Would you all join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As we meet tonight, we recall our mission. We educate for excellence, empowering all students to achieve their educational goals, to direct their lives, and to contribute to society, as well as our vision. The Westlake City School District will provide a dynamic, student-centered learning environment. Our district will be characterized by high achievement, actively engaged learners, mutual respect, shared knowledge, pursuit of new skills and capabilities, collaborative learning, willingness to take action, a team commitment to data-driven continuous improvement through a strategic planning process and tangible results. Thanks all for joining us tonight. I move to approve the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Craft?
Yes.
Panukin?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Lozinski?
Yes.
You're not?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Very, very recently, we lost two of our own, Mr. Ferguson, Mr. Gannon. On behalf of the Westlake City Schools Board of Education and the entire Westlake City Schools District, our condolences to their family. And let's just take a moment to remember Mr. Ferguson and Mr. Gannon. At this time, we're going to move to recognitions and informative reports. Uh, Dr. Gagan?
Thank you very much. This evening, it is my pleasure to share with you my state of the schools presentation. Now typically, we don't have um, a lot of people would show up to participate live, but fortunately, as you could see on YouTube, we are recording. We will also take a version of this um, maybe cut it down, maybe bookmark it. We'll still see what we're gonna do with that and post it on Parents Square. So others can see that as well. You know, when it comes to similar format where I'll talk about where we were, where we are, and where we're going. I'm still gonna hit those topics, but I think in light of recent events and questions that we've had, I'm gonna take a slightly different approach this evening. Maybe? See Todd? Oh, there it is. So the first thing I'm gonna address is I am gonna talk about navigating uncertainty. It's not gonna be the focus of this presentation, but it will be an underlying theme throughout, and I will continue to refer to it in different sections because it it kind of intertwines into most components of what we do. We are in in a time of uncertainty. Um, for some, this can cause anxiety, others excitement. Uh, my goal tonight is to share with you where we are as a school district and why we're in a position to handle the uncertainty that's in front of us. So this is how you can feel, kind of just tilting your head back and forth um, as you're trying to figure out what exactly is going on. Um, this is where we are. Uh, I can tell you about what we're going to do, but I can't tell you exactly how all aspects of uncertainty will unfold. This applies in many different ways in my mind where you do find yourself, whether it could be a news story, social media post, some sort of thing like that, and you just find your head twisting. You're just trying to figure out specifically what is going on. Um, we've been here before. Reflecting on my tenure here in Westlake, we've settled and recovered from a strike, consolidated four consolidated four elementary schools into one, and educated students during a global pandemic. This is not our first rodeo. What I'm gonna do today is we're gonna unpack this on a federal and state level and see what it is we're actually dealing with. So let's talk about it on a federal level first. The primary question I get is this. If the Department of Education closes, how does this impact the Westlake City School District? My answer is the primary benefit to our school district operationally is funding. Um, I've seen our funding amounts reported differently with different amounts. I've seen different uh, things posted on social media or or news outlet sites uh, about the amount of money that we receive um, federally. So I do want to say that we have three primary funding resources on the federal level. The first one is Title One. I'm able to tell you that this year, we received four hundred and twenty thousand dollars in Title One monies. IDA, which is um, uh, for special education, we received nine hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. And for free and reduced lunch services, last year, it was five hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars. The reason I'm using last year's money for free and reduced lunch is because um, we get reimbursed for that. So we, so I can tell you what we received this this year, this current year in Title One and IDEA, but I have to refer back to last year in order to tell you what we received in uh, federal funding for that. So that's about two million dollars. When you add in a few other smaller grants, it's probably between two and two and a half million dollars is what we receive federally. For reference, our annual budget is around sixty million dollars. So even though two million dollars is a lot of money, when you look at a sixty million dollar budget, it's not as large. We've not received any indication that these funds are going to be eliminated or reduced. Um, we've heard that the funding streams are either gonna be moved to another department or sent directly to the state. Operationally, we currently, so the point that I'm gonna make in this bullet, when we look at it operationally, we currently access and manage these funds through the Ohio Department of Educational Workforce. Um, in that website, we have our entire spreadsheets. They're they're kind of look like spreadsheets, but we manage federal grants. Oh, right here. We manage federal grants through that website. Our consultants are from ODE or ODEW now. Um, and as a matter of fact, uh, you just had a desk desk review. I think it was Paul, Todd, and Amanda a couple of weeks ago, and that was through Department of Educational Workforce. So the major point that I want to make is regardless of the decisions that are made on a federal level, the Westlake City Schools will continue to educate all students. Decisions made federally will have little to no impact on the day-to-day operation of our schools. That's something that I really feel like I have to say because the the group that we really heard from the most are the parents of students with disabilities. And there's a level of anxiety that if something happens with um, the US Department of Education, will we still be providing the services to students with disabilities? And the answer is yes. It's less than a million dollars that we receive uh, from there, and our special ed budget is much larger than a million dollars. Getting into state and funding, state funding and legislation, we're not only facing uncertainty on a federal level, but also on the state level. In my opinion, it's the decisions on the state level that can have the greatest impact on the Westlake City Schools. And I'll hit a couple areas. I'll start with funding. So in the governor's current budget proposal, he has the Westlake City School District experience an increase of five hundred and sixty thousand dollars in the twenty-five, twenty-six school year and an increase of five hundred and ten dollars in the five hundred and ten thousand dollars in the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. What I want to emphasize is that this is a proposal. So this is what the governor put out as a proposal. It is a long way away from being final. It has to go through um, a lot of different versions. So what I'm saying is even though we're looking at it and saying we're seeing a potential increase of five hundred and sixty thousand dollars in twenty-five, twenty-six and a potential increase of five hundred and ten thousand dollars in twenty-six, twenty-seven, the budget deadline is June, Todd?
June thirtieth.
June thirtieth. By that June thirtieth deadline, it could look very different. So I don't want people to be watching this on YouTube or listening in here saying, well, you're gonna get this much money because we don't know that. So when it comes to legislation, I'm not gonna go through and list specific legislation and say, here's what I think about this one or that one. So it's not about one particular bill or legislation. It's about the general sentiment towards public schools. My concern is what appears to be a lack of value and respect afforded to public schools. In Ohio, I've heard that range of between seven or eight out of ten students in Ohio attend public schools. I want to emphasize, we are a crucial part of our state and local communities. In many cases, we're also one of the largest employers in a community. I do believe that a strong community has strong public, private, and charter schools. My position is not against anyone who wants to educate students. It's against the devaluing the public schools in favor of others. We also work well with our local legislators. I'm in favor of statewide goals of improving literacy, career technical education, and numeracy. We all benefit when our state is a place where businesses want to come and open their doors. We want to ensure that there's a talented and ready workforce. That's in the best interest of all of us. Our ask is that legislators work with us so we can implement these goals effectively. Overall, the view of public education matters. If a state values education and views us as a partner to reach the goals of our state, it impacts the decision-making one way. If the state does not value public education and views us as a hindrance to the to the to those goals, it's gonna make their decisions go a different way. So let's bring back the federal funding. Some of the different things that we hear is that it can be moved to another department, like special ed can go Health and Human Services, um, and then other conversations. It's well, that monies can be pushed to the state to distribute. Well, think about what I just said. If the state's opinion, if it goes down and if the federal funding then goes to the state, the state's opinion could impact how they distribute those funds. So that's one of the things why I don't think it's right to to identify a, an individual or particular bill, but really to emphasize the value of public education and what we provide to our communities in our state. So what are we doing on a state level? We believe in public schools. Your school board, your administration, your staff are all in. We believe in our community, our students, and our families. We advocate individually and through our organizations. Those organizations include OSBA that our board members are part of, BASSA, OASBO, and our district is also a member of the Alliance for High Quality Education, where I serve on their executive board. An example of the advocacy of the Alliance for High Quality Education was to work on an increase of state funding contribution to our schools. Previously, we were a five percent district. So what a five percent district means is this. A five percent district is when it comes to state funding, we would get five percent of every dollar. So if state funding for the year was a dollar, we would get a nickel. And one of the things that we advocated for was that percentage to increase. And we were able to work with our legislators to have that increase go from five percent to ten percent. That not only impacts us in state funding, but if they were to apply a percentage to other forms of funding, it impacts that as well. So if a grant's out there or some other opportunity and we're set to get five percent of that, then that change now puts us in a position to get ten percent of that. So that was a really big piece um, uh, advocacy that we believed in. Um, we're also active. We meet as a group and discuss discuss legislation that is either being proposed or ideas that are being floated for future proposals. This is not only beneficial to us as educators, but also to legislators so they can hear the true or unforeseen impact of legislation. We dealt with that with Senate Bill twenty-nine. Um, there we we worked with them on that. There were some issues that um, were unforeseen in there, then went back, and they actually changed the legislation to fix those issues. So it's not just going in and asking. It's being a partner in a lot of these school policies. So what can you do? Um, first and foremost, advocate for public education. Advocate for the implementation of the scare of fair school funds formula. Let your legislators know that special education, support for struggling learners, and programs that support school lunch are important to you. We found that legislators listen, and in general, they're good people. The biggest and most influential impact you can have is here within the state of Ohio. And I encourage you to speak to your representatives. So now let's talk about the Westlake Schools. From slide here, as it says, from uncertainty to action. No matter what you see on the news or social media, we still have schools to run. Our students count on us to be here for them every day. Westlake City Schools through the years, oh, sorry. I do it on mine here, and it's I need to do it up there too, so you guys can see it. We've been steady and strong. The Westlake City School District is run well. We're consistently working on improving our process educationally and operational. Operationally, when you hear a lot of chatter outside of your organization, you can chase the streams or the threads down a rabbit hole or look internally. At those times, we look at our measuring sticks. What is it that we usually focus on during a state of the schools? It's those items that I will now reflect on. And my point is there's going to be a lot of external talk. There's gonna be uh, different feeds that you have or any type of thing like that, and we hear those things, but then we look inside and we say, okay, we're hearing that, but what's actually happening? So I'm gonna break this down into some of our measuring sticks. The first measuring stick that I'm gonna talk about is finance. With all the talk about funding, where are we? This is important because if you don't have funding, you can't have programs. In regard to fiscal responsibility, Westlake is second to none. I'm gonna start with our treasurer, Todd Hopkins. Um, I will say honestly, he's the best treasurer that I've had the pleasure to work with. No jokes being put in there or anything like that. I usually would add one of those, but I am not. He is a great treasurer. Todd's office staff and our directors play a huge role in our fiscal management. They work within their budgets, securing, optimizing grants, engaging community partners to provide opportunities and services to our students. I'll give you an example. Starting off this year, we had some great news that we're able to renew our partnership with the university hospitals. They committed to donating five hundred thousand dollars over the next ten years to the district while providing two and a half athletic trainers to our schools. This change, this two and a half trainers is an increase from one, which is a significant cost to university hospitals. So it's not only a wonderful cash donation, but also continuous service to our high school and then expanding the services to our middle school. So our middle school athletes can also have access to training services. The other thing, remember to hit twice. The other thing is staffing. So through our directors and building leadership, the management of staffing levels is a huge component of our fiscal management. This is the number one expense in any school district. If you go to any school surrounding areas across Ohio, the number one expense is staff. So the management of staff is crucial. In our last state of the schools, last year, I shared our shared our plan to reduce staff. We recognize that our enrollment is down and it, but it is down in most communities as well. We track our staffing data. We know that this year we have twenty-one teachers eligible for retirement. We also know that at least eight more are eligible next year. With proper planning, our goal is to reduce staff and in some areas, increase opportunity and choice. I'll get to an example of that when I talk about engaging our students. We projected over the next three years, we will be able to accomplish our goals primarily through attrition. The tricky part could be certification with current staff. We will try and move folks from place to place. However, you know, licensure issues could, I wanted to point that out there. This was not initiated by any announcement or projection of a reduction of funds. We believe it's a proper way for an organization to operate. Districts really get into trouble when they don't do this. It can lead to drastic cuts and a negative impact on students. Earlier, I mentioned that Westlake's story is second to none. It truly is. In our district, we have a robust course catalog for our students, ideal class sizes, new facilities, including turf baseball and softball fields, uh, which just happened last year, and reserves to support us through uncertain times. Additionally, the district has not received an operating levy since May of two thousand sixteen. So
Six.
Two thousand six, I apologize. May of two thousand six. That puts us, so in a couple of months, we'll be hitting the nineteenth anniversary of the last operating levy passed in the Westlake Schools. This contributes to the information you see on this map. This represents the millage that is used for educational purposes in each community. This includes funds that go directly to the school districts, but also to a JVS. Now, when you look at Westlake Bay Village and Rocky River, we are in a consortium. So we, as a school district, pay the consortium directly. In other communities, there is a tax that's levied directly to the taxpayers that go directly to the joint vocational school. So when you take those two forms of uh, tax revenue, put them together, that's the millage. Not only is Westlake the lowest lowest millage in any of our neighboring communities, but we're also the lowest in Cuyahoga, Lorraine, and Medina County. So when you think about that, that's pretty amazing. Not being on the ballot for almost twenty years and still being able to maintain what we maintain. So the next measuring stick that I want to look at is the state report card. Um, two years ago, we received five stars. Last year, it was four and a half stars. This was primarily due to, oh, I wonder if I can, I can't circulate, but if you see in the bottom middle, the early literacy. Um, it's with that component category. We did go through this and previously shared this in a in in a board meeting, but we did utilize a different measuring tool that triggered another report card element. So it wasn't that our delivery has changed or, you know, um, the early childhood folks did anything wrong or any type of thing like that. We used a different assessment tool that then triggered another um, element within there. We did go back to the previous assessment, but I want to make clear that we do use other assessments as well to ensure that we're able to get all of the students the assistance that they need. So I'm gonna bring back that thread of uncertainty. I said that I was going to bring it up in other aspects here. One of the issues when you try and run your district looking at a report card is this, um, it changes. And I'll point out two examples in here. So early literacy, um, they said, well, you know what? This was a reason here. We resolved that issue, and now in early literacy, they're talking about potentially taking out uh, a data component, which is specifically promotion to fourth grade. Well, we promote one hundred percent of our students from third grade to fourth grade, so it's a really good input for us, and they're talking about removing that. So we don't know if they're gonna do that, um, and what that means to early literacy for us in the future. The other part is just to the right of it where it says college, career, workforce, and military readiness. You could see that that is not recorded on the report card yet. The issue is it is not a hundred percent clear of how that's going to be completely measured. And it's supposed to go on the report card for next year, but in the governor's budget bill, he does have a proposal in there to wait one more year. So back to the uncertainty, we don't know. So when I look at this sort of thing, we can't control the report card. We we kind of look at the inputs, make the adjustments as we can, but it is something that we just don't know everything that's gonna be in there. So here's what we can control. That's engaging our students. Our first area of focus when we look at engaging our students is teaching and learning. We've worked with our staff to acquire new resources to support them in educating our students. We're also committed to helping our staff successfully implement these new new resources. So what we've been doing is our academic team has worked really hard with our teachers to identify math, ELA, other subjects where we purchase new resources. And it's not just about buying the stuff. It's about working together to be able to implement it consistently because you're gonna start implementing it, pull back, meet as a team, maybe bring in a rep from the company, make sure that we're applying it right. So there's a lot of work that happens instead of just buying it. So that's been a big component for us as well. Additionally, buildings are expanding and improving collaborative groups such as their teacher-based teams and professional learning communities. Time is also committed to the science of reading and the literacy implementation. We are very grateful for the three professional development days that we've had, and we appreciate the planning that goes into making those days useful. So I mentioned earlier that I was gonna talk about when we're looking at reducing staff but expanding opportunities. One goal that we had was to expand choice for students. This will be new to students on the Dover campus next year. The schedule adjustment in choice is a result of adding new tech courses to each building. In Dover Intermediate School, they'll be able to choose to take courses in the science of technology and design and modeling. In Lee Bernison Middle School, students will be able to take courses in automation and robotics as well as app creation. Another positive result would be the ability for students who participate in a music program to be able to take that music program for five days a week instead of three days a week. Now, if they take multiple music programs, they're still gonna have to, they're gonna have to split that, the the three days a week. But if they commit to one, they'll get the five days a week, and right now, they can't do that. Speaking of career tech, at Westshore, Career Technical Programs MEMS, which is the micro soldering of computer chips and welding, open next year. At Westlake High School, we are starting a forensic course that already has one hundred and twenty students enrolled. We're proud to be improving classroom instruction for all students while um, expanding the choice and opportunities for all of them. School safety. This is the third measuring stick I want to discuss. If our students are not stay safe, none of the pretty previous items that I've shared so far even matter. School safety has been a gradual and consistent commitment by the Westlake City Schools. For years, we've had SROs in every building. Our buses have stoparm cameras. We have a threat assessment team in each building, block cameras on each campus, et cetera. This year, we will be adding the Sentijic Alert System. This will be a clicker on each staff member to alert colleagues and others about different situations that can occur. It can alert people of just room issues, like in a standard click. Um, could be a medical Could be a medical concern. It could be an altercation between students or a much serious, serious, much more serious incident that could result in a lockdown. Tying this back to the finance section, we also applied for a grant of forty thousand dollars from Attorney General Yost to help make this happen. Now, we have since received that grant and we'll be using it towards that. Finally, our strategic planning. What we're doing as a district, however, we know that we need to consistently improve. It's time for us to complete our new strategic plan. We are working with the Impact Group to engage our stakeholders. They've met with focus groups consisting of administrators, staff members, parents, community members, and they have individual meetings scheduled with Board of Education members. There's also a survey that is live to gain feedback from families, community members, and staff. Our focus is on educating for excellence today and in our future. The calm in the storm. We understand that there's a great deal of uncertainty surrounding education right now. I shared this story actually with my administrative team and I even talked about it with our P T A. I'll be honest with you, I don't like flying. Every time I get on a plane, I think it's my last day on earth. I just don't like it at all. I find myself looking at the flight attendants. And when I feel turbulence, I hear a noise, we make an unexpected turn, which is unexpected to me because I have no idea which way we're going, so they're all unexpected. But I tend to look over at the flight attendant. And if they're moving along, passing out snacks, soft drinks, that sort of thing, if they don't, if they're not showing that, but if they're running back to their booster seat or whatever it is and strapping down, I know there's something to be concerned about. One of the things that I talked to my leadership about, and what I also believe our board has done is we are the calm. We are the people who who they're going to look to to see if everything's okay. And that I think is really important for us. We are experiencing some turbulence. I want to balance this message. On one hand, I want to assure you that we're going to be okay. With that being said, I do encourage you to advocate for public education. Let your leaders know what is important to you. It could be public education in general. It can be special education, support services, whatever it is you believe. Make your voice known. I close by pledging to you that the Westlake City Schools are focused and ready to continue caring for your children. You're now free to move about the cabin. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions or any type of thing I can answer or clarify?
Okay, so Syntetics is definitely a go.
It's a go.
Okay.
We received the money from, we didn't receive it yet, but it's been committed to us, right?
And that has been reindicated that we've been awarded that grant.
And that means every staff person in the building will have this on there.
In the district. So it's not going to be in one building, it's going to be in every.
That's what I meant, in every building in the district, that'll be teachers, aides, custodians.
My understanding.
Everything, okay. That's, that's really good. And I also have a question for Adam because I know we talked about the bus, the cameras on the buses. Has that deterred people from passing buses illegally at all? That was a problem before.
To get us some information from our current transportation director to see what they've seen this year. I I know that we did get a decent number of reports that we were able to follow up on by using the cameras in the past. But I don't know exactly who the number that I'd be happy to look at.
One of the things that's neat about that is because when you get that data, I don't know if it was Adam or someone on your team took a map of Westlake. And then you can do like a dot. And so if it happens once, it's a really small dot. But if it happens five to, you know, the more times it happens, the larger the dot gets. And you can look across the city and see where we're experiencing the most instances of somebody passing violations.
What conclusion do you come to with that?
Well, one of the things we found is it, it's typically not like in a neighborhood where it's a simple two lane road and you're intentionally passing. Many times it's in a multi lane road where and and we've heard from law enforcement that there's also times people don't understand that there was, there was a turning lane there, so I thought I can do this or or these type of things that we have. So most of it is not people being like bad, you know, most of it is a reeducation type of thing with that.
That's that probably assists with consulting staff.
It does. And you know, the other, so the other conversation we had with law enforcement when we did this was we we found that we wanted to educate. So then we we try and put things out at the beginning of the year, but so many people come to Westlake who aren't from Westlake that it's really tough to reach people, especially if they're not connected with the schools or not living in the community to share with them, watch this area. So there were times that we would, that police would be able to sit in some of those hotspots and and to be able to do that as well, but that's.
We got those cameras too, they can set up.
What's that?
The police department has those cameras, they can set up also.
Yeah. Yep. Well, afterwards, yes, sorry.
Dr. Gagin, you had touched on career tech enrollment in MEMS as well as welding. And I I didn't get the figure that you mentioned that students that are already registered for.
We, I know of at least one welding. I don't know if we have any MEMS. So I don't know if any, I just just because I know a friend might skip. The welding was really excited about it. So that's why I do know that, but I don't know how many other.
Is that something that will, other than being in course catalog, that will advertise or to students' attention?
Yeah, we we actually have Westshore, we have the the consortium coming in and presenting and being, and I think we do career fairs and other types of things to show what's available.
Can you give a little more detail on that forensic class that a hundred and twenty kids have already signed up?
Paul Wilson cam.
Absolutely. So they were students, actually, Keith O'Nouse talking with students and there was, there was a lot of students who were interested in that. So Don Olney, who is the partner chair, he's been up the class, approached Rob, put together something, advertised it through their meetings and really a hundred and twenty students signed up for it. So that was excellent. We were very happy about that. They're going to do different things. Keith has some different things where he's going to reach out to local law enforcement, have them come in, do some different things with it, so.
Is it tech based, technology based or not necessarily?
Um, I think there's an aspect of it.
Okay.
Talking to Keith, maybe like a section of it.
Gotcha.
But yeah, it really, it it all came from student interest. And I think even the numbers surprised them a little bit. I know Keith was originally talking to Keith, he was like, oh, maybe thirty or fifty books or something. When he came back at one point, he talked a little bit about classroom sets.
Even the internship class in the report had thick growth.
Oh, yeah, twenty two, right?
Actually, Paul Pat will be here in April, I believe, at one of the meetings to talk with some of our students about kind of the experiences they have. So he's done an excellent job of going out, he's presenting a road read on April second. Try to continue to get interest from local business partners to have our students go out and shadow around the community.
So, Mr. President, did you have another question?
Well, I was just going to say that maybe in the fall after, when we do our curriculum toward the high school, that might be one class that we could visit if possible.
So I I don't, we typically don't do this, but I was wondering if we could pause for a moment because I don't want to, I know you had some questions. And and what I want to do, but it's typically not a town hall where people can do that, but we can pause and then I can go and answer some questions and then we can get back to the meeting.
Sure.
Okay, so would you mind?
No.
We take a.
We need to move to adjourn for a period of time to a.
Yeah, so it would take a break.
You'd have to take a recess if you want to pause the.
Sure. I stream, I move to recess.
Okay, so let me just make a note here real quick.
Sorry, Dad.
How long would you like to recess?
Ten minutes.
I mean, you came.
All right, so you have a.
Took the time to come.
Discussion. Okay.
Craft?
Yes.
Nukan?
Yes.
Liam?
Yes.
Lizinski?
Yes.
Kerna?
Yes.
Ocean Carrot. So on YouTube here, we're going to go, just we're going to mute both the video and audio.
Sure.
And for up to ten minutes, we will be in recess.
All right.
All right, no. Okay, coming back into our meeting. After our break, we're going to move, continue with recognitions and informative reports with our treasurer, Mr. Hopkins.
Thank you, Mr. Craft. I'll be honest with you tonight. I have no formal report. I do want to thank Dr. Goggins for going over the finances. I know Dr. Goggins often jokes with the fact that, you know, treasurers get pretty, pretty scared when superintendents start talking finance, but he's done a very nice job and I appreciate him explaining it during his state of the school. So I have a number of issues in front of the board tonight, but I'll go over those once we get to that section.
Thank you. At this time, we have a hearing of the public. The public may address the board during periods of the meeting designated for public participation. We, the Board of Education, do not engage in a public debate, and especially do not have a public discussion about individual student situations in this setting. Each person addressing the board shall give their name and address if several people wish to speak. Each person is allotted three minutes until the total allotted time is used. During that period, no person may speak twice until all who desire to speak have had the opportunity to do so. Period of public participation may be extended by a vote of the majority of the board present and voting. I don't see anyone that would like to address the board. If anyone would, now is the time. I'm going to move to approval of minutes. We've all had an opportunity to review the minutes from February the 10th of 2025. All those in favor of approving minutes say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no. Minutes are approved. We're going to move on to the treasurer's recommendations.
Thank you, President Craft. Tonight, I've got two sections, so I'm going to go over number five treasurer's recommendations first, because I do need to keep them separate. So I'm in, in section five, I have five resolutions from the board. I'll briefly go over. I've then announced, a couple of that announced there listed. I have an agreement with Cintas, who does some of our uniform and mop service. I have an agreement, or I have a proposal to contract with Ohio Schools Council for cooperative advertising and bid selection process for two school buses, two 78 passenger school buses. This will be going into the bid process. We do not plan to purchase this fiscal year, but under our PI plan, we'd be looking to pending the bids coming back, we'd be looking to contract for two buses next fiscal year, probably in the late summer before the start of school. I have a resolution to authorize the execution and delivery of a master energy agreement between the district and power for schools. And specifically their energy supplier, NG Resources. The board has had a contract with Power for Schools for a number of years. This is an extension of that. It actually is lowering our per kilowatt hour slightly. And we're able to save on some aggregate purchasing among a number of districts to keep our costs as low as possible. I think this is somewhere around five, five and a half cents per kilowatt, kilowatt hour.
Correct. It's a six and a half percent reduction from the current rates.
So I'm hoping the board will approve that. And then finally, I have an agreement or a contract with a company called AED Vector. They help maintain our AEDs in the district, a very important device that we have available throughout the district at all of our buildings.
Very important.
And actually, I, I lied to you. I have a six resolution. I have F on there as well. I have classified substitute pay rates. So what I'm asking the board to consider, we brought it up briefly. We've talked about in the past, I've talked about it with our finance committee. I would like the board to consider here, voting on tonight, setting our substitute rates for the classified staff at the base rate for each job within the classified negotiated agreement. So a cleaner would be paid at step zero, base rate of the cleaner scale. A bus driver would be step zero of the bus driving scale. They would not be eligible for any step increases as they're just substitute employees. And they would not be eligible for any stipends that are built into the contract as well. This would set rates going forward. Okay, so if, when base or step zero base rate changes, the substitute pay rate will change with that. We, we generally assume that will happen each year in August, but that would be per the negotiated agreement. If the negotiated agreement doesn't have an increase, it would not change at that point. So it would be tied to that negotiated agreement. Those are the six items I have in this section, section five. So if it so pleases the board, I'm happy to combine six, I'm sorry, five A through five F.
I move to approve treasurer's recommendations, five A through five F. Is there a second?
Some of.
Discussion.
Yeah, I have a question. The, the substitute pay rates, how do we set with other, other districts?
So right now, and this is classified, not teachers. Okay, so when we look at our classified staff, we are, we are very low. So we're struggling to find substitutes. Right now, we're at minimum wage. So we're very low, not just among other districts, we're very low in a competitive marketplace, just looking for people to come in and fill these positions. So these would bring them up and would make us very competitive with our peers. And to be honest, I, one of the challenges I've had in trying to analyze the cost of the district, I'm not sure this would even have a negative impact on the district. Because right now, we're filling a number of positions by paying overtime to our current staff. So if we can find an outside sub who works at the base rate, it's beneficial financially as well. And to be honest, sometimes it's just difficult to even find our own staff to fill jobs because it's a lot of work. And if you've worked an eight hour day already, do you want to continue to work another four or six hour shift? So we're hopeful that this will make us very competitive and we'll be able to fill those positions with outside substitutes.
Thank you. Question on the, so two buses for next year. Were we purchasing roughly three every year or is it kind of?
So it's been hit or miss. We're not, you know, exactly on that. We have a bus fleet of right around 40 right now. And so it, it all depends on, and as we looked and we talked in finance, Mr. House spoke and talked about our PI plan, he's going to present to the board at a work session here. We're targeting the April work session where he can go over his summer plans and our, our long-term plans. But, you know, to be honest and to be upfront, and I know the board knows this, but to put this out to the, you know, to everyone in the community. We have more than, we have more needs for our PI than we have funding coming in. So we have funding, annual funding of roughly 1.1 million dollars. Right now, under a recommendation that both superintendent and treasurer made to the board, we financed a million dollars to help keep improvements into the new elementary school. The board approved that back in, you know, 2018 or whatever it was. And so we're still paying a hundred thousand dollars a year to cover that, those upgrades that we did, the LED lighting, the better windows, things like that. We kept the square footage. You know, it was a good long-term investment, but we financed it. So we're really down to about a million dollars right now. We're halfway through paying back that debt of a hundred thousand dollars a year. So you've got a million dollars that you're paying, I'm sorry, a million dollars of funding for PI. Even when we look at school buses, if we try to keep a plan of a, a 12-year cycle or 13-year cycle, replacing those buses, you know, every 12 or 13 years, buying three per year, or right around three per year. Right now, a bus, you know, we're going out for bid or we're asking to go out for bid, but the last time it came through 120, they're right around 120 apiece, 119, 118, something like that. So, you know, you would be, you know, a third, over a third of your, the I funds would be going to those bus purchases. So Mr. House has been working through this, Mr. Coesfar before him, on seeing on what projects do we push a little bit, you know, push a little farther into the future? What do we do right now? You know, can we, is a 12-year cycle on the buses appropriate or should we look to do a 15-year cycle? I know that we generally say a 20-year cycle is probably not appropriate, okay? But, you know, we're trying to figure out and work through that. We've been very upfront. I think that at some point when we go back to the community for operating funds, I would encourage the board to consider putting on another PI levy to help offset your costs. You know, we have that, like I said, the fleet there, we've got maintenance vehicles, we've got, you know, mowers. And when we talk about a mower, I know Mr. Lazinski just, you know, I said something to me a minute ago about it. You know, we, we don't pick up the $500 mower from Home Depot. You know, we have 72-inch cut winged mowers that can go out and cut, you know, a large amount of acreage that we have. And they're, you know, tens of thousands of dollars, anywhere in the range, you know, somewhere around $50,000 from some of these. They're as much as a vehicle. And so these are expenses that we, we try to do and Mr. House is, Mr. House is doing his best to keep within our resources while maintaining our facilities to the highest level of camp.
Thank you.
Along the lines of buses, I know I continue to hear it's, it's interesting to me how electric buses, just the, there are ads on television about, you know, reaching out to boards about embracing electric. I know presentations to the board in the past were, wow, these are really, really expensive. And if I think about our constituency that say, hey, what about e-buses? Isn't that the future? I know California is embracing that in a really big way. But just to those that say, hey, what, what, what about these? Is it costly to inform the board on, hey, what, what, what would it be if, if we embrace such a program in, in all our parts? Or not?
No, I, I think that's a great opportunity. I will tell you. Really, the best opportunity will be as, as we come back and get these bids back, because then we can really look at an apples to apples comparison. Right. The last bid cycle that we participated in, I think our buses were right around 118, 120 apiece. Electric buses, if I remember correctly, were sitting in the near $400,000 range. A little over $400,000 apiece. So you could be at three to four conventional buses for your one electric. Now, there are some grants that we could look for applying for, but that's just your bus. Right. We would still have to cover the infrastructure and charging stations. Again, these are not one that you would typically put into your house because of just the size of the battery. So you would be looking at a sizable cost for your infrastructure. We're not opposed to it. I think there are some, some big, very large benefits of looking at alternative fuel vehicles, whether it's propane, natural gas, hydrogen fuel cell or electric. I think the, the challenge for us so far has been when we weigh that cost benefit analysis. Right. Or when we weigh the cost compared to the conventional, it just hasn't made sense at this point. But we are happy to bring back all of the bids to the board and have the board take a look and see if it would be something the board would be interested in comparing.
Yeah, natural gas. I know I see them driving around the city of Cleveland as I'm in the city.
Yep.
Something interesting. And I believe this is the California model. It was suggesting that the timing of charging of buses and the times that buses are driving, that apparently with these batteries, they are able to, from the battery of the bus, actually push electricity into the grid at the time that most might be trying to buy that energy, that electricity, and are actually able to make a profit. Now, of course, you need the infrastructure and $400,000 buses, those types of things. But again, we, we do have some of our citizenry just asking the question and just so that we provide that information would be fantastic. Thank you.
We're happy to do so.
Um, what's the status of the seat belts on buses? I know every once in a while, we get an email from Rudy.
So legally, there is no status change. I know, I believe it was Bluebird who announced last year that they're going to start putting it in a standard. So I will be very curious on what bus bids come back this year and see what it looks like and see if they are standardized or part of a standard package and see if it does impact, impact pricing. I'm as curious as anybody else on, on how it will come back this year, and we can report that to the board when we have bids back.
Further discussion.
The thing that bothers me about the, the electric is we live here in Ohio and I'm wondering if charging them in the wintertime in frigid weather would.
Yeah, I don't know. Further discussion.
To approve treasurer's recommendation, five A through five F. Craft?
Yes.
Lazinski?
Yes.
Panukin?
Yes.
Liam?
Yes.
Perna?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
We're going to continue with our treasurer, Hopkins, with the treasurer's recommendations on tax matters.
Thank you, Mr. President. We do have a second section here. There are 10 items in front of the board tonight regarding tax matters. By law, changes that were made in the Ohio legislative body a number of years ago, or a couple of years ago. All of these property owners have been notified by before the, at least seven days before this meeting. We've sent out notifications. Our attorney has handled that to meet those notice requirements in front of the board here. They are 10 separate resolutions and they need to be set up that way. The board is able to combine them into one vote if it so pleases the board. But they cannot be combined with anything else. So that's why we have them in their own section here. All of them are for the same reason essentially. When we look at property tax cases, again, a number of changes by the Ohio legislative body makes it a little bit more difficult for the school district to protect the tax base. But in these cases, one of the areas where we can file complaints are recent sales. So the attorney has prepared these resolutions based on a review of recent sales within the city of Westlake to meet some requirements under the law. These are your 10 properties that meet those requirements. So I am asking the board to approve that for us to move forward with challenging the property value. In each of these cases, it appears that the recent sale of the property was missed. And so the property was sold in some cases in 2023. And it was still valued at a lower value. So an example that I'll give you without calling out any individual one here. You know, you have a, a property that was sold more than a couple of years ago. It was valued, or it's currently valued at, at just around $12 million. It was sold for $29 million. So generally, in that case, we would want the valuation brought up to the market value or the sale price. We all know the, the common line in real estate is, you know, it's what it's worth is what somebody's willing to pay for. And so in these cases, when it's a direct sale, we do seek bringing up to that sale price. So that's why it's brought before the board here tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions that I can. But other than that, the next step forward would be if the board approves these, I'll certify the resolutions to our attorney and their attorney will move forward with taking it to the Board of Revision for property evaluation changes.
Is there a motion to approve treasurer's recommendations on tax matters, six A through six J?
Some of.
Second. Discussion.
These are all commercial properties?
These are all commercial properties, yes.
Quite a discrepancy there from 12 to 29.
It certainly can be. And that's the, and that's the, you know, there's other ones that are much smaller. There's ones that would be valued at 1.6 million, but it was sold for 2.4 million. But still, when you look at them, you know, that's 50% of the value at that time. So we do try to do this, and this ultimately helps all of your, in this case specifically, your, your commercial taxpayers. Remember the PI, House Bill 920, you know, as valuation goes up, your millage goes down. Dr. Goggins showed our millage rate for residential property up on the screen earlier. In this case there, as valuation goes up, as we look to increase these values, the millage goes down for all the commercial properties. So while we may get a little bit of back taxes, that would be do this does not help us necessarily going forward. It's just keeping it fair for all of our taxpayers. And forgive me, I heard Ms. Perna motion. It was Ms. Panukin. Thank you.
Further discussion.
I don't have an issue with regards to having served on the planning commission for the city.
I see no reason why you would have an issue here unless the board would have a vested interest in any of these properties. I see no issue and you currently don't sit on that commission anyways.
Just want to make sure. I'm sorry, Mr. Hopkins.
Further. Further discussion.
I think about our constituency that say, hey, what about e-buses? It's in the future. I know California is impressed in a really big way. But just to those that say, hey, what what about these? Is it costly to inform the board on, hey, what? What what would it be if if we embrace such a program in in all our part or not?
No, I think that's a great opportunity. I will tell you. Really, the best opportunity will be as as we come back and get these bids back, because then we can really look at an apples to apples comparison. The last bid cycle that we participated in, I think our buses were right around one eighteen, one twenty apiece. Electric buses, if I remember correctly, were sitting in the near four hundred thousand dollar range. A little over four hundred thousand dollars apiece. So you could be at three to four conventional buses for your one electric. Now, there are some grants that we could look for, applying for, but that's just your bus. We would still have to cover the infrastructure and charging stations. Again, these are not. One that you would typically put into your house because of just the size of the battery. So you would be looking at a sizable cost for your infrastructure. We're not opposed to it. I think. There are some some big, very large benefits of looking at. Alternative fuel vehicles, whether it's propane, natural gas. Hydrogen fuel cell or electric. I think the the challenge for us so far has been when we weigh that cost benefit analysis. Or when we weigh the cost compared to the conventional, it just hasn't made sense at this point. But we are happy to bring back all of the bids to the board. And have the board take a look and see if it would be something that the board would be interested in.
Understood, yeah. Natural gas, I know I see them. Driving around the city of Cleveland, as I'm in the city. Something interesting. And I believe this is the California model. It was suggesting that the timing of charging of buses and the times that buses are driving. That apparently with these batteries. They are able to, from the battery of the bus, actually push electricity into the grid. At the time that most might be trying to buy that energy, that electricity. And are actually able to make a profit. Now, of course, you need the infrastructure and four hundred thousand dollar buses, those types of things. But again, we do have some of our citizenry just asking the question and just so that we provide that information would be fantastic. Thank you.
We're happy to do so.
What's the status of the seat belts on buses? I know every once in a while we get emails from. Really.
So legally, there is no status change. I know, I believe it was Bluebird who announced last year that they're going to start putting it in a standard. So I will be very curious on what bus bids come back this year. And see what it looks like and see if they are standardized or part of a standard package and see if it does impact, impact pricing. I'm as curious as anybody else on how it will come back this year, and we can report that to the board when we have bids back.
Further discussion.
The thing that bothers me about the the electric is we live here in Ohio and I'm wondering if charging them in the wintertime and frigid weather would.
Yeah, I don't know. Further discussion.
Roll call. To approve treasurer's recommendation, five A through five F. Craft?
Yes.
Lizinski?
Yes.
Nukem?
Yes.
Liam?
Yes.
Here not?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
We're going to continue with our treasurer Hopkins with the treasurer's recommendations on taxpayers.
Thank you, Mr. President. We do have a second section here. There are ten items in front of the board tonight. Regarding tax matters, by law, changes that were made in the Ohio legislative body a number of years ago or a couple of years ago. All of these property owners have been notified by. Before the, at least seven days before this meeting, we've sent out notifications, our attorney has handled that. To meet those notice requirements in front of the board here, they are ten separate resolutions and they need to be set up that way. The board is able to combine them into one vote if it so pleases the board. But they cannot be combined with anything else. So that's why we have them in their own section here. All of them are for the same reason essentially. When we look at property tax cases, again, a number of changes by the Ohio legislative body makes it a little bit more difficult for the school district to protect. The tax base, but in these cases, one of the areas where we can file complaints are recent sales. So. The attorney has prepared these resolutions based on a review of recent sales within the city of Westlake. To meet some requirements under the law, these are your ten properties that meet those requirements. So I am asking the board to approve that for us to move forward with challenging the property value. In each of these cases, it appears that the recent sale of the property was missed. And so the property was sold in some cases in twenty twenty three. And it was still valued at a lower value. So an example that I'll give you without calling out any individual one here at this point. You know, you have a a property that was sold more than a couple of years ago. It was valued or it's currently valued at at just around twelve million dollars. It was sold for twenty nine million. So generally, in that case, we would want the valuation brought up to the market value or the sale price. We all know the the common line in real estate is, you know, it's what it's worth is what somebody's willing to pay for. And so in these cases, when it's a direct sale, we do seek bringing up to that sale price. So that's why it's brought before the board here tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions. That I can, but other than that, the next step forward would be. If the board approves these, I'll certify the resolutions to our attorney and our attorney will move forward with taking it to the board of revision for. Property or the valuation changes.
Is there a motion to approve treasurer's recommendations on tax matters, six A through six J?
Some of.
Second.
Discussion.
These are all commercial properties?
These are all commercial properties, yes.
Quite a discrepancy there from twelve to twenty nine.
It certainly can be. And that's the, and that's, you know, there's other ones that are much smaller. There's ones that would be valued at one point six million, but it was sold for two point four million. But still, when you look at them, you know, that's fifty percent of the value at that time. So we do try to do this, and this ultimately helps all of your, in this case specifically, your your commercial taxpayers. Remember the PI, House Bill nine twenty, you know, as valuation goes up, your millage goes down. Dr. Gagen showed our millage rate for residential property up on the screen earlier. In this case there. As valuation goes up, as we look to increase these values, the millage goes down for all the commercial properties. So while we may get a little bit of back taxes, that would be do this does not help us necessarily going forward. It's just keeping it fair for all of our taxpayers. And forgive me, I heard Mr. Pernat motion. It was Mr. Nukem. Thank you.
Further discussion.
Todd, I don't have an issue with regards to having served on the planning commission for the city.
I see no reason why you would have an issue here unless the board would have a vested interest in any of these properties. I see no issue and you currently don't sit on that commission anyways.
Just want to make sure. I'm sorry, Mr. Hopkins.
Further. Further discussion.
Roll call. You're not?
Yes.
Fenuken?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Liam?
Yes.
Lizinski?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
We will move to the superintendent's recommendations. Doctor Gagen?
Thank you very much. I'm going to read the resolution to accept gifts and donations. We do want to thank Mr. and Mrs. David Sidlosky for donating three thousand dollars to the Replay for Free. Ally Sidlosky Memorial Scholarship Fund at Westlake High School. And the William Corley Foundation of the Westlake Bay Village Rotary Club. For donating a thousand dollars to the Best Buddies Club at Westlake High School. When it comes to letters B through J, these should have been explained to. Board members through the director reports that were sent to you. If there are any questions in, well, B through J, I'd be happy to answer them. But when you are looking to consider them, if we can do seven A and seven B. On their own and C through J would be appropriate to put together.
Is there a motion to approve superintendent's recommendation, seven A?
Some moved.
Second.
Discussion. I'll add that I had the good fortune to do a walkthrough at the high school last week and. That good fortune included a meeting with Mrs. Sidlosky. So we say to Mrs. Sidlosky, Mr. Sidlosky, thank you, thank you. For your contribution. And there are a number of Westlake Bay Village Rotary Club members here in the room. And we also had the good fortune to hear from Ms. Devine and a number of students that are involved with Best Buddies. What a wonderful program. Love to hear from the students that visit with us and we appreciate the leadership there. So thank you to the Westlake Bay Village Rotary Club for contributing to Best Buddies. Further discussion? Roll call.
Sinsky?
Yes.
Fenuken?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Liam?
Yes.
Here not?
Yes.
Motion carries.
There are motion to approve superintendent's recommendation, seven B.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
There's some great staff administrators in here.
I agree.
It's good to see renewal of contracts.
Further discussion?
Roll call. Liam?
Yes.
Turn on?
Yes.
Fenuken?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Lizinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
There are motion to approve superintendent's recommendation, seven C through seven J?
Till move.
Second.
Discussion.
Roll call. Fenuken?
Yes.
Lizinski?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Liam?
Yes.
Here not?
Yes.
Motion carries.
At this time, we have a second hearing of the public. The public may address the board during periods of the meeting designated for public participation. We, the Board of Education, do not engage in a public debate, especially do not have a public discussion about an individual student and situations in this setting. Each person addressing the board shall give their name and address. If several people wish to speak, each person has allotted three minutes until the total allotted time is used. During that period, no person may speak twice until all who deserve to speak have had an opportunity to do so. Period of public participation may be extended by a vote of the majority of the board present and voting. If anyone would like to address the board, how's the time to do that?
We need like that Staples easy button they can just press.
They could lead that.
Board items, we have a first reading of policies. Any discussion regarding that?
I think it's important to note, while there's a lot of policy updates, most of it is more in line with updating. Burbage based on the law, whatnot. There are some hot button topics in here. But the reality of it is, is we are required by state law to pass some of these. Whether it's Parents' Bill of Rights or the Religious Time Release for Education, those kinds of things.
We had some lively discussions though when we met.
It's good to have.
Are you referring to strategic planning?
Oh, no, no, no.
No, a policy.
Anyone in particular?
Particularly the ones around like the Religious Time Release and there was a couple of options that we could pick.
I, my. My stance on it, I think I've shared it before. I, it's, it's a policy that we've had.
That's what I thought, yeah.
And I just don't have an issue if I I use, because it's the proximity is so convenient. Is. If it's lunchtime and some parents want their kids to go across the street to Wilbur Congregational for. Bible study or something or something like that. I don't, why would I stop them from doing that? You know, I mean, that's, I just don't.
We did select the option, they're not allowed to bring back food, blankets, anything along that line. We also selected the option to not do background checks. And I actually do very much agree with not doing the background checks because remember, these students are leaving our campus. We do not know who is actually going to be there.
To clarify, the responsibility of background checks would go to. The organization, not us. And so parents would have to understand that, you know, we're not vetting these folks. You're you're choosing to go to this particular place, they are vetting them. And so that's, we don't, we can't run around and vet people from different organizations.
And my concern would be approving one person. But if somebody else, it's a person that's actually there, because we're not going to be doing inspections or those sorts of things. So the liability then calls.
I think most people would not want. People bringing things back to try and entice their children to that intent, you know. No matter what you believe, it's like, hey, don't try and get Mike because that's why we're saying, yeah, don't, hey, if you go, you can get brownies and, you know, we're not.
Or gift cards.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
We've had enough of a complaint when people were handing things out on the sidewalk.
Yeah. So we're not, you can't bring that stuff back.
Well, thanks for all the time you put into that. There's a lot.
The Barb and Liz really sat for a long time. They really had genuine conversations.
There's a lot there.
And there's new ones like the Parents' Bill of Rights.
That was an interesting read.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes?
I don't know if this would be a board item, but you did ask. To that video?
Yeah.
The veterans video, Todd does it if it queued up. Do you want to?
I would love that. Absolutely.
So to set this up, it's a great way to close our meeting. Is. Westlake Elementary School and our, some of our other schools do a really nice job recognizing veterans. Not sure who recommended our students at Westlake Elementary School, but it was for an A plus award. I think it's with W V I Z, the idea stream. And it's a really nice video segment that they did and Mr. Craft saw it and asked if we can show it during the board meeting. And so. Take it away, Mr. Hopkins.
Thank you. Action.
Action.
People always ask me how we choose our A plus award winners. Sometimes we find articles in the newspaper about A plus awards. Or these students, sometimes teachers or students nominate A plus award winners, but sometimes we get emails just like this one. Dear newsletter, I am a community member in Westlake and I want to nominate the students at Westlake Elementary School for your A plus award. They recently held a program that honored veterans. I'm very proud of the work the students did to show their respect and appreciation to our veterans. They deserve an A plus award for the great work they did to honor veterans. We love getting emails like this. After we read it, we reached out to Mr. Planter, who was the principal of Westlake Elementary School. And told him that his school was nominated and won this week's A plus award. Mr. Planter invited us to visit and meet with some of the fourth graders who were a big part of the Veterans Day program. Amelia explained that the fourth grade students wrote letters to veterans to thank them for their service. Amelia added that some students got to read their letters to the nearly two hundred guests who participated in the program. May told us that at first she was nervous about reading it in front of a crowd, but with some practice, she felt pretty comfortable. Don't worry about it, May. Sometimes I get nervous in front of crowds too. Benjamin shared that he was really proud to be able to honor the veterans because they protect our freedoms. And without their sacrifice, our country will be a different place to live. Emerson told us that it wasn't just a fourth grade event. She explained that there was a parade that the younger students walked in and that many students even made short little biographies about veterans in their families. Jordan added that she was happy to be able to be a part of the program because the veterans, including her grandfather, felt honored and respected. And it was a great opportunity to show how grateful we all are for veterans. This week's A plus award goes to the students at Westlake Elementary School for honoring those who serve our country. These students really trust us.
Awesome. Love it. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I mean, the Westlake Choir, whoever came too, that was awesome part of it. Yeah.
Absolutely.
So I move that way during.
Discussion.
Roll call. Adjourned at seven twenty three PM. Lizinski?
Yes.
Fenuken?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Liam?
Yes.
Here not?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Back to the judge. So thank you.